Are you gonna, you know how this works right Brandon, the reorganization? You have to open the meeting.
Okay.
Right?
Yep.
You, yep.
Got it.
What do you got, Robert's rules?
Yep, nice. Making sure, right? Some highlights.
Quickie.
Thank you, Mr. Todd.
You're welcome. Alright, good afternoon ladies and gentlemen. My name is Brandon Gomlich, I'm the town manager. And I am going to call the meeting of the Weathersfield Select Board to order on March 4th, 2021 at 6:33 PM. I'm gonna start this meeting by taking nominations for Chair. Do I hear any nominations for Chair?
Nominate David Fuller for Chair.
We have a second.
Second.
Don't need a second.
No, don't need one.
Don't need a second for nominations.
Just a motion.
I didn't bring a pen, sorry.
All in favor?
Aye.
What am I voting on?
You're the Chair.
Oh. Well, I had to get a pen.
And so now you turn the meeting over to the Chair.
Now I'm gonna take, turn the meeting over to David Fuller, the Chair, the Select Board.
Uh, the next order business is to the election of Vice Chair. Is there any nominations for Vice Chair?
Nominate Michael Todd.
Are there any other nominations for Vice Chair? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Uh, next order business is the election of the Board Clerk. Are there any nominations?
Joey, you wanna do it again?
Unless Paul wants to, or Kelly.
I don't mind.
The, the, the role of the Clerk sometimes is sign some papers or maybe like a, maybe a Miranda or something.
Finish minutes up or do whatever.
Yeah, something.
Somebody making?
You don't do, it's not, there are sometimes you have to do some things. It's not, it's not a lot, but there are sometimes.
I'm already the Clerk for the, uh, Board of Authority and others, so.
Is, is there a nomination for Clerk?
Nominate Kelly O'Brien.
That's usually what happens, the new guy, that's what happened to you, right?
Sure is.
The new, the new gal gets it.
Are you okay with that, Kelly?
Yeah, we're not gonna, we're not gonna make people do what they wanna do.
Cause if you're not, I'll do it. If you're not, I'll do it.
Is it, is it okay, or, I mean, we're not gonna railroad anybody into anything.
I don't care, I just don't know what to do.
Yeah, I know. And I just, if, if you're uncomfortable, or if you're okay with it, we're, we're okay. If, it's, I'm sure that Brandon, or there, I'm sure that there's a, a book that we can tell you. It's, it's not a great deal of anything. Um, sometimes we'll have the Clerk, well, I don't know, Brandon does it for the most part. I was gonna say draft a letter from the Board, but usually that's from the Town Manager or something.
Let, let Mr. Tillman do it.
Okay.
Kinda get used to it.
I'll do it, that's fine. Yep. I'll take it. So, is it, is there?
Nominate, nominate Paul Tillman for Clerk.
Olivia, can people hear online?
Hmm, can not hear.
Okay, can you unmute your microphone?
Yeah, the camera is on mute. Whatever this feed is, is on mute.
Well, but now it's on me, so if you're looking at the screen.
I don't know, the camera's on mute.
We're having a lot of echo here. Okay, so, okay, so can we have a, like, can we have somebody? Can anybody hear me online? I'm not sure who's online there.
No, because I believe I just muted again.
I don't hear any audience on the, on the conference system either.
Is this, do you have to have this on, or it's something, there's no light on this thing, so maybe it's this.
I'll get, I'll get out of the way, cause she's coming.
There's no, there's no, like?
You call Aza.
Yeah, I think that's the best step next, because, I mean, this is what it normally looks like when.
Who do you have to call?
Aza, that's Sapa.
If anybody can hear us, we're in, we're in a bit of a delay. We're trying to get audio for, for the people online, or, so.
What is that message up there?
We're just gonna.
Hey, Aza, nobody can hear anything online?
Please let us.
Oh.
Okay, we got Paul Choffey saying that he can't hear either, so, just, just hold on a minute, we're, we're gonna fix it. I'm reading something, it says, "From our end, it appears that Sapa's mic is off."
I'm reading something, it says, "From our end, it appears that Sapa's mic is off."
Yes. Yes. So it's repeating us. So it's repeating us.
That's all.
Aye, aye, aye.
Yeah, okay.
We're gonna, we're gonna.
System? Alright, you're all set.
Okay, we've got blue lights. Uh-oh, now we got a lot of echo. Can anybody online hear us now? Hear me now?
You have to unmute your microphone.
Mm-hmm.
Anybody, can anybody jump in and, and say you can hear us? Testing.
Oh, you know, what else?
Somebody can hear you.
Anybody? Okay, I can hear now, I've got, but we got like.
I might need to turn those mics off.
No, those need to stay.
These stay on, that needs to go down.
Where'd they hide it?
Last time I think I turned it down, I might. Yeah, hit that, and then let me go.
I think on appointments, appointments, you should add a IT gentleman, or somebody, woman, somebody, IT specialist.
We got any echo now? Nothing. Can everybody hear us now?
We can't hear anybody though.
Who can't?
Very good.
Everybody's muted.
No one's turning there.
That's on.
It says very good now.
Somebody says very good.
Can somebody respond back, um, with their voice?
Judy says yes. We're on.
I think Jeff's trying to.
I just wanna make sure that we can hear others. I don't hear anybody.
Yeah, I don't either.
Let me turn it down on here, cause it looks like really high, can, turn that back up, Mike. Maybe this will work.
If anybody can hear me online, we're having some audio problems and other, so just give us a minute.
Could somebody online say something?
Ashley is talking, but it's not coming through.
Somebody says we can hear you all now, but the problem is we can't hear you. So you may be able to hear us, but we can't hear you. We can hear you all now, but I, we can't hear them, so how do you unmute the, how would, how do we make it two ways? We have to pick somebody and try, I think, how, I don't know who's on, so.
Did you just mute it again, Brandon?
Sapa's now showing me.
Paul wants to know if we need to hear them.
Okay, yes, I do. If somebody needs to comment on an agenda item.
Can somebody talk, please? Audio, anybody? Anybody?
Hello?
Do they need to unmute their microphones, or do you, or how does it work, Brandon? So they need to?
Yeah, they, they need to unmute.
Can anybody unmute and talk, please? We're trying to connect audio back and forth. Anybody? Paul Choffey, can you talk, can you unmute, please? Nothing, from nobody.
He's talking, but you can't hear him.
Okay. So he's texting, or?
No, like, so when they start talking, you can see it on, here, I can see that there's noise coming from their mic, but nothing's coming out on this end.
I'm sorry, but we can't hear you, it's not your fault. I guess it's our fault here, so we're trying to figure it out. So anybody, if anybody can hear, uh, hear me, that's what we're trying to get, some connection, something's going wrong. Are all the boxes on, or is it some kind of a link that's not plugged in, or, I don't know, I don't know anything about the system.
So they can hear us?
Okay.
Right now.
But we, we cannot hear them.
Volume up, as simple as, I'm sorry, I'm not trying to.
No, I know, I know, I don't know.
I think the volume came out last time.
Paul Choffey's saying that he can hear us, but, but it's just our problem.
It's our receiver, or, or whatever it is.
Now try, can someone try talking?
That just went out again, Brandon. It just went, it just went red, this up here.
But, yeah, but Olivia just pushed the button.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay. Sorry.
This is blinking now, so we got blue blinking.
Can somebody try talking again?
Jeff is trying to talk.
So, Brandon, can I, just a quick suggestion? What if we just scrap that, take one of these laptops or a computer and just log into Zoom and then turn on the, the speaker and stuff with a, with a laptop or an iPad?
Looks great.
I know, nice.
Awesome.
So Joey, looks like the one-fifth scales are not as many as there used to be, from what I'm hearing from some people?
Yeah.
That work has had some too, so I was like, when I started talking, he jumped right over to my computer and.
Is, is changing that, Brandon, gonna change the login of the ability from people to log in, or you have, that's the same link?
Same link.
Same link, okay.
Hello? Okay, let's try this one more time. Can everybody hear us?
Yes.
Got it. Well, with a lot of echo.
Alright. There's gonna be some echo.
Well, if he, if, if Mike turns this like really down, then I think everybody can hear us in here. It's, it's got to do with whether or not, we don't want this echo mic.
Why it's echoing?
Turn that right there.
Oh, we figured it out. Everybody has to dial back in now, but the echo's gone. Hopefully.
They'll figure that out, or they lost the connection, right? I wish we had told them that before.
Aza, show Tom.
Alright, Judy's back on. Hey Judy, can you hear us?
Yes, I hear you, just fine.
Okay, great. Paul's back in, Chauncey's in, there was a couple of others that were in, that are not in right now. Okay, there you go.
You want, so, are we back on now, so there's not gonna be any echo, so everybody can hear me? Do we want to just wait for a minute to see who else comes on? Because there were several others that were on that are not on, so, we got an echo. Is that you, Mike, doing that, or is that Brandon?
No, it's not me.
Okay.
There's no more echo, echo now.
I don't know, nobody's talking. No, there's no echo.
Okay. Go ahead.
But nobody's, but several people are not logged in that they were before, so I don't know if they can, or I just.
I'm only missing one person.
Jeff's, Jeff?
Yes, can you hear us?
Yep.
Yes.
Wasn't Paul Choffey in? He's not there.
He was there a minute ago.
I don't see it.
He's there.
I don't see across the top.
I can see him, I can see him on.
Okay. Yep, I got you.
Awesome.
Was there, uh, wasn't up before Sean Whalen was on? Not there now.
Sean Whalen's not on.
I don't know, but he was, his wife's name was up there before, Ashley. Why don't I, why don't I take up a few things? I mean, uh, if we establish the, um, regular meeting days and times, I mean, that's, I don't think that's too controversial. Normally on, uh, the Board has been meeting on the first and third Mondays, uh, of each month.
Go ahead and log back on.
Pending holidays.
You're welcome. Everything's all set.
We have also, in the past three, four months at least, uh, instead of starting at seven o'clock, we've started at 6:30. Does the Board have any feelings about when you'd like to meet?
Make a motion to set the meetings for the first and third Monday at 6:30.
Second.
The motion been made and seconded to have the Select Board meetings, uh, the first and third Mondays of each month pending holidays at 6:30 PM, here at Martin Memorial Hall. Is there any discussion? The, the only question I have, Brandon, is that I don't think there's been any other meetings, right? The, the Planning Board meets the, the second and fourth Mondays.
Yep.
I don't know when other Boards meet. So the options are, we'd rather not have it later in the week, we'd have in the beginning of the week. Is that okay with everybody? I don't hear any other comments. Okay, uh, all those in favor of having the meetings on first and third Mondays at 6:30 PM here at Martin Hall, pending holidays? And now those, if there's a holiday, generally speaking, it defers to the Tuesday. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, um. Review the minutes of a previous meeting, we have, uh, the 16th of February's minutes. I'd like a motion to approve the minutes of February 16th, 2021.
So moved.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded to approve the minutes of February 16th, 2021. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? The appointment of a recording secretary.
I make a motion that we, uh, appoint DeForest Spears as the recording secretary.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion been made and seconded to appoint DeForest Spears the recording secretary for our meetings. Is there any further?
Just, I think Mike was gonna ask, she did put a, she did submit a letter asking.
Okay. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Uh, next up would be an appointment of an alternate recording secretary.
Nominate Chauncey Tillman.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded to appoint Chauncey Tillman as the alternate recording secretary. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? We'd like to be on the record to appoint, uh, to have Brandon secure a newspaper of record. Uh, we have two here, either the Valley News or the Eagle Times. I believe that the one presently is the Valley News.
Yes.
That's true. Um, normally it has to do with price, or, or we look at geography, um, how much we use the paper. Do you have any comment about that, Brandon?
Nope, I think, uh, you know, right now we're using the Valley News, and then we use the Eagle Times as well. Depends on what we're doing, whether we're advertising, or, um, if we're contacting the news, um, or something else, so I think those are the two options that we have.
Would the Board like to make a motion to appoint either one of these as the recording newspaper for the record?
Motion for Valley News.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded to, uh, have the Valley News be the newspaper of record for the town. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Um, before we get to the Town Manager Report, um, I'd like to hold up this plaque for, cause it's here, um, I wish it was here for town meeting, but, so that the camera can see it. This is the plaque for the Service Award for the 1879 Schoolhouse Committee, and it will be, uh, hung up in the, uh, schoolhouse itself, and then the names, uh, will be on, uh, upstairs as well, but, and we, we did have one of the town service, the round carved, carved out ones as well, but that just came in, so I just wanted to show the, uh, for the camera that. Um, let's move to the, uh, uh, Town Manager Report. Go ahead, Brandon.
So first and foremost, I just wanna explain the technology issues that we're having tonight. The room was taken apart for election, and we reconfigured everything today. Um, Olivia and Aza from Sapa worked really hard to make sure, um, that these microphones and our cameras were all tied in. We tried something new, everything was working, um, and I think when we set up Olivia's laptop, something wasn't configured completely right, um, so we'll definitely be looking into that throughout the week and fixing those technology issues. But they certainly worked pretty hard on it today, but there's some bugs to work out. It's COVID-19, it's a new era.
Can I, can I interrupt, just for a moment? Um, that's all well and good. I think we got a little distracted at the beginning of the meeting with all of that. We have a new board member.
Yes, and I just wrote that down, so it's my apologies.
Sorry, Brandon.
I know, we were just in a hurry, and then the whole camera blew up, and, and then we were doing us. Welcome Kelly O'Brien to the Board. And I know she made a comment that, that, you know, when we were talking about the Clerk, and she was a little hesitant about that, but we wanna make you feel comfortable, and any information that the Town Manager can share with you or us, happy to answer questions or, or anybody in the office, uh, feel free to reach out and, and, and get used to things here. So welcome. I didn't, I didn't, I didn't mean all of it like that, but we're, we are like 20 minutes from fixing our audio and, and video, so.
Yep.
Did you have any other comment?
No, just welcome, Kelly.
Welcome.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, so, every month, our administration creates a report to the Select Board, a report to residents, we're now putting these reports on the website, um, which went live in January. Um, the first topic on, in this Town Manager Report is COVID-19 and the Emergency Management. So the Select Board's doing appointments tonight, there's a couple of appointments that I make, um, and, and one of those appointments is the Emergency Management Director. Mr. Fuller has served in this position for the past year. Um, we've worked very closely together throughout the pandemic and the state of emergency. This is a one-year appointment, um, so I'm hoping Mr. Fuller remains in the Emergency Management Director seat. But it's certainly been, uh, very nice to work with him and the Emergency Management team throughout the pandemic. The second topic on, in my report is the Tenny Tree Project. In August of last year, the State of Vermont Highway Division reached out to our administration and, and told us that the Tenny Tree, um, has, has deteriorated to a point where it needs to be cut down. This was a topic of debate for, for some time, and, uh, we reached out to, uh, Ginger Winberg and, and the Conservation Committee. And the conclusion of that meeting was to reach out to Tenny resident, uh, Tenny family members and, and hold a meeting with them and learn what they would like to see. They were interested in a memorial for Romaine Tenny, um, so we went back to the State of Vermont, uh, the Principal Clark and I, and, uh, in the beginning, they were going to, they were going to add, I think it, what was it? Some kind of a plaque in that location, um, and we went back and forth and requested if we could receive a grant, um, and they asked us how much we would need for a Tenny Memorial, and, uh, negotiations led to a $30,000 award, grant award, um, to build a, a, a memorial for Romaine Tenny over in the Park in Rad. So that was, uh, received yesterday, um, and we've scheduled three meetings, one kickoff meeting on March 25th. Um, anybody in the public, uh, in Weathersfield is welcome to attend this workshop. Um, basically in the kickoff meeting, we're gonna review the grant award, uh, review what the Tenny family requested, um, Tenny family members will be present, uh, the workshop will be held right here, um, and also via Zoom. The second meeting will be the project design, where we come up with, um, exactly what we're gonna be doing in that location, um, and then I'm gonna write an RFP and we'll start construction on May 6th. Um, so anybody that's interested in attending those meetings, um, please RSVP to the Principal Clark for information in the report. Does anybody have any questions? Right. The next couple of items is just, you know, fire department contracts are complete and those will be reviewed next week with each fire department. And we anticipate a contract signing to be held on April 5th. Our town auditing contract has expired. We put it, we put it on RFP on March 1st and those proposals are due on March 26th. We reached out to about 50 auditing firms, so we expect a pretty good turnout. Employee performance evaluations will be held throughout the month of March and the month of April. If anybody has any comments or concerns regarding any town officials, now is the time to let me know. And we'll certainly take that into consideration during performance evaluations. The next item is our solid waste RFP. There's a lot of contracts that are expiring. This is one of those contracts that we're in, in the solid waste management district, so that, that RFP went out, two people have shown interest of a waste in Casella. And a meeting was held today, proposals are due via mail on March 25th. And then the executive committee will be reviewing those proposals. Oh, is it, is it the fourth?
Maybe, I don't, sorry. I attended that meeting today.
Okay. So Paul's on the executive committee, I'm on the executive committee. And then it goes to the board, right? So we'll definitely be keeping you up to date on that. The next topic is the Small Business Development Initiative. The select board representative to economic development, Michael Todd, and I have had very productive conversations regarding small business growth in Weathersfield. Over the next several months, our administration is gonna be reaching out to all Weathersfield business owners and assembling a panel of business owners down here in this room to just, you know, have conversations regarding small business growth in Weathersfield. Learn if there's anything we can do to help each other and/or attract new businesses to Weathersfield and what those businesses would look like. The next item is the ATA agreement. We presented that in the previous select board meeting and look forward to bringing that up again. I just wanted to say congratulations to our highway superintendent, Ray Stapleton. He submitted a grant application for $29,300 to strengthen our hydraulically connected roads. We received notification on February 24th, awarding the town of Weathersfield with this funding. This funding will allow us to complete seven segments of high-risk hydraulically connected roads in Weathersfield. So over the last three years, the highway department completed 20 segments. And there's another grant application pending for four more segments of $23,000. Vacancy applications, moving into the future. We've received a lot of emails and letters and nothing's really consistent regarding appointments. It makes things a little bit difficult upstairs. So we've assembled the vacancy application for next year, if the select board can review this and potentially put it on a future agenda for approval. It would make things a lot more organized upstairs, so that's in the packet tonight. Appointed committee policies and procedures handbook, we're in the process of assembling a, a policy and procedure handbook for, for members. That'll also be for select board review. And then the town website. We made several updates to the town website, on the select board, town manager, finance, front page, animal control, lister's office. And then there's a, a whole big list of website changes that are coming soon. So if anybody in the public or any board members have any comments or concerns regarding the website, anything that you think would be helpful to see on the website, let us know and we'll, we'll certainly update that. That's all I have for tonight.
On the, on the solid waste, it, wasn't it a staggered contract where the trash was not in the same year as the recyclables?
That's correct.
Or have you merged that together?
Recyclables were la, was last year.
Okay.
Trash is this year.
So how long was the recyclables contract for, two or three years?
Two years.
Okay. So this one, you want for?
They're actually, they're, well, they're actually looking at a 3-1-1, so.
Okay.
Is what they talked about today, but.
What are they doing?
Looking at like a three-year and then a one-year extension if needed, or another one-year extension, so. That, that's, that's the, the group we can decide to and how we're gonna vote in that.
So the, the compact.
They're sending out the RFP for that.
But the compactor is the one that's up now?
Yes.
The trash?
Yeah.
Not the recyclables?
Oh, the compactor, in fact, they're also gonna quote, because we, we weren't sure, like Springfield and, and Weathersfield, I think Casella owns the, the containers.
Okay.
But I think we own the compactor for our town.
Correct.
So they asked, and I wasn't sure, because I hadn't talked with Ray about what we're gonna do with the containers. So actually, they're gonna put, Casella is gonna put a price on their RFP just for, if we just needed to rent those or whatever, just have on there, so.
My only question was.
Doesn't mean we're gonna, I just.
No, 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 I thought the contracts were staggered, so we have two things going on at the transfer station. Trash and recyclables.
Yes.
And, and, and they're in different years.
Yes, and they're different contracts, so we could have a, right now, we're under contract for recycling with Alva Waste and trash with Casella.
Right.
And has, previously, the only person that bid for this solid waste contract was Casella. This year, Alva Waste has surfaced and, and they're also bidding.
Okay. Any questions for, for Brandon for the, for what, the topics that he went through? Any questions online for Brandon? I keep having to remember that we're online as well. Any questions on the town manager report? Okay, thank you. And some of those are gonna continue on for, when we start getting into the, about what we're gonna do for, for future, future items as well. I, I make a comment about the first one, about emergency management. The only, you know, I'm not qualified to do that as much as other people are, but my only goal is to do what we did, which was two or three times down here. And I thought it was really helpful. Today, we actually acted on one of those things. What we had, just for everybody's knowledge, is we had every entity that we could think of that had to do with the town. We had the library, the school, the highway, both fire departments, Golden Cross ambulance. David Baker was here, the superintendent. Did I leave anybody out?
Police.
Police. And, and what we learned on that, on the, I think it was on the last meeting where, where the school had offered the services of the school nurse who has been coordinating COVID shots and, and today, Ray asked me if he, if it was possible to have some connection with a couple of the guys to, to schedule for those under, what, what, what did he call them?
COVID-19 vaccinations.
Yeah, no, no, there, there was a title that he tried to get under. It wasn't emergency services.
Oh, it's essential workers.
Yes. So that connection that the school gave us was really helpful.
And she, she actually responded back to us and asked us how many.
Yeah.
So we did a tally in the office, did a tally at the highway garage, and then we sent that information back to them.
And I don't, I don't think they're at any cost or the town would somehow work that out, right?
Yes.
Anyway, those, that's my only goal. And even at the scenes that we've had, a couple of the emergency scenes, we had a flood up in, up in Amston. It's just to try to keep everybody together. That, that's the, that is the key. So I don't mind doing it, but I'm, that's my only goal. I mean, all these other people know what they're doing, they have far more training, and we don't wanna overstep on police or fire or the school building or anything like that. It's just a matter of coordination. Any other comments on the town report, uh, town managers' report? Okay. Next on the agenda is the personal business, excuse me, business personal property letter. There was a, a letter. Let me, let me stop here for a minute, I'm going to do this in order, I guess. I'm gonna turn at least a minute or two of the meeting over to the vice chair. Can you do that for me?
Yeah, you going tomorrow?
No, I'm not going anywhere, I'm just gonna step down as a chair and I've got a few comments to read for myself. Can you take over the, I'd like to be recognized.
Okay. Recognized, A. Fuller.
I have a comment, and, and these not necessarily in order, but, but I have seven of them and they, they may be more. I've read this business personal property tax letter. And I've read that the listers have sent these out forms yearly to businesses that they are aware of. I've not received one of these letters. The, as many people know that, that I milk cows since 1977 and the dairy cows have been gone since January 17th of 2017, it's been four, four years and two months already. I do have somebody that does my taxes for me, so I'm not really aware of all of these things that go on. So as a result of this letter that's come out, I apparently am joining some 111 other businesses in town who have had this letter sent to them, but, but I didn't get one, but I've seen the letter. And if it's my responsibility to, to know about this tax, then I accept it. And I did today, no, ask the, the tax department about any agricultural exemptions that there may be, and I don't know there are, they haven't gotten back to me yet. I do sign a similar sales tax exemption form from dealers and any suppliers that I've ever done, but the majority of my things right now don't necessarily have to do with the farm there. So I guess that's what I have to say as a, a resident of the town. So with that, I would end, I would end those comments.
You want the meeting back?
Yes.
Somebody made a comment about the.
Hold on, did you just turn the meeting?
Yeah, I'll turn the meeting back over to the chair.
If there's a comment online, I would, I would take that comment.
The vacant, the vacant appointments and 20% voter turnout are catastrophic for Weathersfield.
Point of order.
Well, we're on the, we can take that up for a comment, but the, but we're on item number 11 on the agenda, which is a property ta, a tax letter, so. We, I can, I can take that comment in a minute, I suppose, or after we get done with this. We have not made any appointments yet and I, I guess I would just agree that the voter turnout is what it is. I don't, I don't know how to fix that. So on the agenda is the business personal property tax letter. We'll take some comments on this letter. And after receiving several calls about this, and I had, I don't even know how many I've had, more than I've ever had on any other subject that I've had to deal with town and the politics. So after those contacts with me, I decided as the chair and the emergency management director to warn a meeting, an open meeting for discussion. And that letter is posted on the town's website. And I asked the town manager to do that for me on the February 24th. That letter is on the town's website and not its Facebook post. And that's exactly why we're here tonight, to discuss the letter. That's what it's on the agenda as and for open discussion. I did have a conversation with town council and he informed me that it was totally appropriate for the democratic process of this subject to be in an open meeting. As the emergency management director, I was told by several of these phone callers the hardship that any tax may have on their business at this time. And in that letter, I said that I would advocate for the full board to ask for a waiver of this tax. I've since learned through council that we would need a town vote to do that, that the board does not have that ability. It's a little bit unclear to me now whether or not underneath COVID-19, the state of emergency, and we don't have enough information on that yet, whether or not the same things are in place for 2020 as they, 21 as they were in 2020. The board will remember that the state granted the board, for instance, the ability to waive penalties and interest on taxes. And we, when we did move the tax collection date a month, we could, I, we could have moved town meeting, but we didn't do that. So those pretty much are the two options for the board at the moment. Either to have a special town meeting to address this or for the town manager and I to still investigate within the state of emergency whether or not he, whether or not it is allowable or in fact, it could be reimbursed costs to the businesses under another COVID-19 grant. Brandon was very, very successful on the first round. He, excuse me, he was able to get the town some $55,000 for reimbursed costs for COVID-19. So my thoughts are that given the votes, and I thank people for voting and the budget's passed, whether you feel one way or another on them, they all passed. And I don't think that this rises to the level of a special town meeting. So I don't know where this goes from here, but I just don't feel that this rises to the level. I'll take, I'll now take comments from the board about this or the town manager and I'll open up to the public. I would remind people that we're to talk about the letter and that I would like to keep personalities out of it. I will act as the chairman and stop that if that happens. We need to focus on what the residents were gonna call us, if any of you people had, had contacts about, questions about this. So with that, I would ask the board if they have any comments on the letter first. Let me go around the room, Paul, did you have any, do you have any comments on it? Mike Todd, do you have any? Nothing, Joey?
No.
Nothing. Nothing. Kelly? Nothing. Just a minute. Brandon, as a town manager, any comments on this? Okay, good. Lynn? No, now I recognize you to speak, Lynn. Now here's my comment. On, I wanna allow you to speak. But on February 25th, you noted an email to the board and the town manager and 11 people that you had sought counsel as a lister and intended to potentially take legal action as a lister against the town manager and the board. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna grant you the opportunity to speak on the topic on the agenda, which is the letter. The tax letter or thereabouts. But if it goes down to names and other things, then I, under, under the advice of council, we have not going to allow that. So I, I'm gonna grant you the floor. And but if I, but if I find that it goes into persons or whatever, then I must stop under the advice of council. Because you have noticed, the board, that you have counsel. because you have noticed, the board, that you have counsel. So I'll, I'll give you the floor.
The lister's office received a request for information, so we prepared a statement, and I'll hand out to everyone after I get done reading it. First, please let me make this clear. There is no Weathersfield inventory tax. The Weathersfield inventory tax was voted away many years ago by the residents. It is the responsibility of each business in Vermont to know the laws pertaining to their business. If a business in Weathersfield has not filed a Vermont Business Personal Property Form currently or in the past, then they are in violation of Vermont state law. If a business has not registered their active business with the Vermont Secretary of State's office, they are in violation of Vermont state law. 32 VSA subsection 3618 requires all business owners to list business personal property and submit it to the lister's office annually. Businesses are required to request the form and submit it to the lister's office. As a courtesy, the Weathersfield listers have sent the form annually to the businesses we are aware of in Weathersfield. When we are made aware of a new business, we add it to our list. This year, we looked at the Vermont Secretary of State's website to review the list of active businesses in Weathersfield. This resulted in additional businesses receiving the form and hopefully a more accurate list. When the listers are notified by the business owner that their business is no longer open, we remove it from our list. Weathersfield voted a number of years ago to grant an exemption on the first $10,000 of assessed business personal property. If a business owner declares less than 10%, $10,000, excuse me, of business personal property more than once, the listers will make the account inactive and may send another form in the future to determine if the status of their business personal property has changed. As shown in the packet I'm about to hand out, and it was an email you all received earlier today, if a business, um, I'm sorry. The first business listed in the packet declared $22,000 in business personal property. The first $10,000 was exempt as per the Weathersfield town vote. That left a total taxable value of $12,000. The municipal tax rate, not education, but municipal tax rate, was approximately 64 cents per hundred dollars for this fiscal year. That left them an annual bill of $76.94 for business personal property tax for the fiscal year 2020, 2021. Business personal property taxes raises approximately $15,000 each fiscal year. This year, it was $15,904.85. With the increase in businesses reached this year, we feel it could be safe to assume that this number may increase. If anyone is aware of a business that the listers may have missed, we would be happy to add them to our list to make it more accurate and equitable for all businesses in the town of Weathersfield. Of the 19 business personal property forms returned so far, at first glance, 12 seem to fall below the $10,000 exemption. Of the 30 or so individuals who emailed or phoned the lister's office to ask questions regarding the business personal property tax form so far this year, we thank you for taking the time to reach out to us. The lister's office has no option, one way or another, has no opinion, I'm sorry, one way or another, as to whether or not to vote out the business personal property tax. That is up to the residents of the town of Weathersfield. The majority of the lister's duties are clearly spelled out by Vermont state statutes. The lister's office is overseen by district advisors from Vermont Property Evaluation and Review, a division of the Vermont Property Taxes. The listers do not require or need permission from the select board or the town manager to complete their oath sworn duties. Yes, we agree, Mr. Fuller, there is a very large breakdown in communication. If any member of the select board, or Mr. Golnick, or Mr. Fuller had contacted us when we first received a phone call from the residents or business owners regarding their business personal property tax form, a quick and simple phone call to our lister's office would have likely answered all of your questions. If anyone ever has any questions, there is usually someone in the lister's office Monday through Thursday from 10 to 5. As always, we're there to answer you and help you in any way that we can.
Is that, you're, you're all set? Okay, good. Are there any questions, um, from online? From any, anybody that's visiting us, uh, for the meeting? Chauncey, can you help me if there's anybody? No questions, no comments?
I have a question, this is Lisa.
Thank you. Okay, Lisa Slade?
Lisa Slade.
Okay, for the minutes, go ahead.
So, whoops, um, can you still hear me?
Yep.
Okay, um, so just a couple things. I mean, I think the letter caught a lot of businesses in the town of Weathersfield off guard. And maybe it's the business owner's responsibility to know the tax rules and regulations, and they should have done this, you know, on their own every year. Obviously, based on the, I think based on the number of letters that went out, this hasn't been done, and so there's a lot of people that aren't aware they should have been doing that. So I think, I mean, what I'd like to ask of the select board is if the select board and the town manager and the listers can work together, hopefully come to a resolution to help out the businesses in the town of Weathersfield. I know you've done the grants in the past. By the looks or sounds of the meeting tonight, Mike Todd and the town manager, they're working, you know, for small businesses. So I don't know if something can be done to waive this this year, maybe to put it on the ballot next year. I, I agree with Mr. Fuller. It doesn't make sense to have a special town meeting just for this. This only affects, quote unquote, a handful of town residents. So I don't even know, you know, people aren't gonna know about it. They don't know the pros and cons. They probably won't vote on it. Who knows if it's gonna pass or what's gonna happen? But, you know, given, given the time that we're in right now, it's, uh, it's just too bad. I think it's bad timing and caught a lot of people off guard. And I guess I question if, if, quote unquote, only $15,000 a year is generated. I mean, is it really worth all of this hardship? And, you know, I just, I'm, I was surprised. It was, quote unquote, only $15,000 collected.
May I be recognized?
What's that?
May I be recognized?
Yes, go ahead, Brandon. Are you, first, are you finished, Lisa? Thank you.
I do have another question. I guess I wonder how many people, how many people have filed them on an annual basis in the past? In, in the select board packet, there's a list of like 66 businesses. There's some duplication on there, so that's a little confusing. There's another sheet with 111. There's like a total of 178. So I mean, did, I don't know what those sheets are. Were 111 letters sent out this year? 66 is what, I mean, that can't, that can't be true. I don't know. I guess I wonder where the 66 number and the 111 number and the total of 178 comes from.
Okay, are you finished with the question in the statement? I just don't wanna...
I am, yes, sir.
The online things are a little bit fuzzy. For clar, well, just a second, Lynn. For clarification, Lisa, Lynn Estey is here, and maybe she can ask, because I saw, I, I saw some information that said 50 people had filed these taxes last year, and some were zero. And then this year, there happens to be, it's some, a lot larger number. So maybe she can clarify for you the number of, of issue. Go ahead, Lynn.
Um, Mr. Fuller, there were 50, um, business personal property tax forms returned last year. We went on the Vermont Secretary of State's website, and I have not finished sending out all the letters, but right now, we're at approximately 167 businesses. The list you got wasn't complete. We had, the Secretary of State's website isn't very user friendly, and we found some more businesses that were listed. So there will be more, um, letters going out on Monday to cover the remaining businesses, about 25 that we missed last week. And these are all businesses that are listed as active or we know are active because we drive by and see they have an open sign out, and they're selling wares, and that is how we do it.
Did that answer your question, Lisa? Did you, did you hear, Lynn?
I did, yes, thank you.
Okay. Brandon, did you have a question?
I have a statement.
Okay, go ahead.
I think, I really just want to, I didn't, I actually wasn't going to respond to anything tonight, but I do wanna respond to one statement that I heard tonight, which was a lack of communication from my administration. There was no communication with my administration making us aware that this letter was being sent out to businesses in the community. So I think that's where the breakdown of communications began. If there would have been communication, I would have requested that a form be attached to that letter for small businesses in Weathersfield to fill out to let me know if they're having a hardship during COVID-19. In December, the economic development representative and I filed a grant for small businesses in Weathersfield to fill out, and we received numerous applications from businesses that were having hardships. I wasn't aware that this was being sent out. It caught me by surprise when the select board contacted me and thought that my administration had sent it out. I understand that it's by law, but the communication didn't start with us.
Well, and I, and I said early on, and I'm, and I'm gonna hold you to the same standard that I was, I was holding Lynn, so we're not gonna get into that, I don't think. What we're gonna get into here is a solution for this year, and we're not gonna have a, and I appreciate your concern because I'm right with you, but, but, but that doesn't get us any further down the road. So I wanna, I do wanna work together, and I am interested wholeheartedly in working out a situation where somebody could get reimbursed for a hardship, no problem with me. Just a minute. So I want to get to the end of this, which is those first two things that I think we are all gonna be able to agree on as a board, which is number one, this doesn't rise to the level of a special town meeting. Is that agreeable to the board? Okay, good. It, it just doesn't. So step two is, the law is the law is the law. I get it, okay? I get it from either, it, it, so there, there is no blame here for me. The, there is an absence to me of when I receive phone calls like I have, and I've done it from, over the years, from a variety of things, starting back in the school in 1997. This is nothing new to me, to have residents come up to me and do that. But our goal here is to, particularly under the state of emergency, to be able to get, gain some information about what that is and what the dollar amount is to, uh, the town manager. I would add one quick note on this. Of the 15, and, and this is, this is very important. Of the $15,000 earned last year, and of the 50 businesses that reported, there's one business that contributes $12,500 to this. That was, information was given to me by the treasurer, Steve Hire. So, so let's put everything in perspective about what, what it is for everybody somewhere around, around that. Now, I'll recognize Lynn, go ahead.
Mr. Fuller, on the front page of the spreadsheet that I gave you, it lists, um, each amount for each business. And actually Comcast, um, sends in approximately $24,000, and different utilities are $15,000. If you look at the, the side over here, cable is 17, 653. So there's many different businesses that do it. The highest number for an individual Weathersfield business is $544 per fiscal year. And this is all public information. This is all information that is submitted with the grant list that the listers produce every year that we set our tax rate on. So if anyone would like a copy, I'd be more than, just contact the lister's office, and I'd be more than glad to get you a copy. Thank you.
Good, thank you. Mike Todd, go ahead.
I got a couple things.
Okay.
A minute, I go, you said the law is the law is the law.
Yes.
Ms. Estey, um, you stated the same thing, um, uh, in regard to the tax that businesses are responsible for requesting this.
Correct, that is what the statute reads.
The statute doesn't instruct the listers to take this initiative and become a, for lack of a better term, a police force for enforcing this. It, it, that's not what the law says. I read the law. In, in support of the, the town manager's comment, you yourself said there was a breakdown of communication. If we had just come to the listers, that would have been a courtesy and a consideration. Does that not go the other way? It would, could it not have been a consideration of you and your office to go in and speak with the town manager about this and what was going on? Especially in the midst of COVID, as he pointed out, you're...
I'm gonna chair, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna chair the meeting right now. Nope, you're gonna, not gonna interrupt me because I'm gonna stop.
Okay.
I wanted to set the rules of the meeting equal to everybody, and you've drifted off, and I'm not gonna allow that. And so I'm not, and I don't wanna allow a response to that either, Lynn, because I don't wanna go down this road. It's not gonna blow up here. It's going to come to a common solution. That's what's going to happen. That's why I want this open meeting. I want to invite the public, if there's any businesses, to do this. We're gonna end up with a solution. We're not gonna end up with, with World War III.
I agree, I agree.
So it is the responsibility of the business owners to do this. I've read the law too, and you know what? If I didn't do it, well, then I'm a big bad law breaker too. So, um, but I'm gonna join 111 other people who weren't on here and noticed it either, and the people that contacted me. And I would point out one thing that's, that's a little disturbing, that, that it's, it, I don't believe, I don't have any of the machinery to, to milk. I don't know about an ag, for my own personal thing. I don't know about any agriculture exemptions, but, um, it is, it seems burdensome, which is what several people said to me, to go around and make a list of all this stuff knowing that you're not gonna meet the threshold and, and of that $10,000. So it is work for somebody to do something that's not gonna materialize, and I see that happening in this sheet here where people are zero too. So I don't know the answer. Joey?
I'm wondering, are we able to change the exemption amount? Not necessarily the law, but the exemption amount?
Only with a town vote.
Only with a town vote?
Yep.
Okay.
And it would be at an open, warned, you know, a town meeting. Go ahead, Lynn.
I would like to say that this is the same letter that's been mailed out by the lister's office for the last 20 years. And the reason that we send this out as a courtesy is because our district advisors advise us to do it to help the businesses out, and it's something that we do every year with the recommendation of our district advisors in Vermont Department of Evaluation and Review.
May I be recognized?
Yep, Paul, Paul Chaffee, go ahead.
Paul Todd, the up left, with small business property. And, and my, my comment is, if you wanna be fair to every, everyone, every business, you either need to make everybody comply with the regulation in the case of this form. And as Lynn pointed out, somebody who has $12,000 of personal property value is gonna pay, I forget, no, $76. And you have to recognize that the value is a depreciated value. And so I gotta believe that the majority of small businesses are not gonna be impacted heavily by this, but to be fair to the businesses that do pay, you either need to, to make every business submit the list, and maybe the majority of them are gonna be zero, but if that's what the law says, and that's what you, you should make people do, or you have whatever's necessary, a vote or whatever to, to expand the law, you know, next year or whatever. That's, that's, that's my comment.
Thank you. Do we have a comment online? Do we have any other comments? You know, there's been a number of people speak and whatever. So is there anybody new that wants to make a comment? Nothing, Chauncey? Nothing? Yes? Judy, go ahead, you raised your hand. Judy, go ahead.
Hi, Judy Jervis here. I'm just wondering, usually when, or in my case, when I started my business, I went to the town because I didn't know if I needed permits or this or that. And I asked when I left, is there anything else I need to know about? And nobody mentioned this to me. Now, I've done business in town for over 20 years. I've done business for the town, and I've never got one of these letters. I had no knowledge of it. Now, suddenly, I got whacked with three of them. So I'm a little bit disconcerted about the whole thing. And is there a way that they can make sure that new businesses that come to town will know about this in the future? That's it.
You know, I've been at Plains Road for 43 years, and I don't recall getting this either, but, but, but farmers do have lots of different breaks that I don't, I don't even know about. So I, I appreciate your... appreciate your comment, and it's in the record, and I don't know any other way other than to post this up. I'm agreeing with Mike Todd a little bit, that it's a little bit, it does impose, it seems to me, it imposes almost like a stick saying, you know, we love small business, but here's another tax. And it may be small, but it may not be to somebody else. I don't know. Are there any other comments about this letter and about this? I, we need to be able to know what to do from here. Are there any suggestions from the board about where to go from here? Mike Todd?
In my conversations with the town manager, I believe, and I'll ask Brendan to clarify, the possibility of requesting grants to offset the hardship of this tax paid by any of the local businesses for this year. Well, we try to figure this out.
Yeah, we're definitely going, I mean, I see, I see the list here, and you know, some of them are 162, 379 is all the ones for $46. But that could be a hardship for somebody. And we might want to consider putting together a fund for those people that are having hardships.
Or at least opportunity. And I don't know the answer. And this is just this list. I don't know about the 166. I don't know how that plays out to, this is just the ones for what, 2020. So...
This fiscal year, correct.
Yeah. So it's not what might be. So I don't know the answer. Paul?
I just, I'm looking at the list, and this is, this is good, but I'm trying to understand the numbers at the end, and maybe it's just me not seeing it, but in one aspect, it says the business, the personal property tax is approximately $15,000 a year, which is, you know, the past year. But I'm just looking at these totals. I was trying to understand, because like that Comcast is 24,000. Is that paid to the town then?
Yes.
Okay. So this total, I'm sorry, so this total is like 33,000, and then?
Correct. 33,505.20 is the grand total.
Yep.
But by the cable companies, they pay $17,635.35 of that 33,000.
Oh, okay. That, that makes sense.
And the number on the bottom, 15,905 was rounded up. It's 15,904.85.
Yeah. No, it's okay. I got, I see that now. So they kinda get like a, they don't have to pay the whole price. They pay partial or something? Is that a, or don't know how?
I don't know how it totally breaks down. That's just what Carolyn told me is how it came out. And on the back page of the, the list of the actual businesses, there is a breakdown.
Page one, right?
The last page, where it says rate name, the bottom, the bottom spread, says non-homestead education. That 17,635 is paid by cable. No other business, no other businesses pay a educational rate, just that one. And I don't know why it's done that way. It's our program that completes the form and spits it out for us.
Thank you. Brandon, I've got a question of you. So when you turn to page two of this sheet that Lynn handed us, page two starts a breakdown of the individual businesses, and you just happened to look up at the first one. And so when you look at the, they happen to have to pay taxes on $12,000 of grand list. By the way, I didn't even know, people asked me, what's this tax? Is it 20 cents a gallon? Is it, is it $5 a tree? Is it, I had no idea what the tax was. So the Select Board does have a role in this, because we set the tax rate in June.
Correct.
So, so, so we, we have a timetable here, point one, we have a timetable here to deal with. And I know that this letter says get all this information back to us by April 29th. I think that's the date. There's probably a reason for that, but none of these taxes can be calculated until after we set the tax rate in June. My question to you, Brandon, is, does Suzanne or Rosalie or whatever compute these individual, this is a lot of work to do. Do they compute this 74 cents, like on this first one, and 49 cents? And does your financial office do this?
Not that I'm aware of. Lynn?
I think the computer system that generates the tax bills does.
But this has to be plugged in by hand, because you did...
I think Nemrick does that.
Okay. Because you don't know what somebody's number would be. So if mine is, let's say, mine is $10,128, somebody has to take $128 and add it to my grand list by hand, and then figure the local education rate, the special rate. I mean, it's, it's a lot of work.
The computer spits it all out.
But your office doesn't do it? You don't know about it?
No.
You know, I...
I think Nemrick does it toward the accounting office. That's my understanding.
It looked to me like a lot of work. It looks to me like, so, so it's not necessarily, my question is, okay, it seems like you get $15,000 or 15,900, so you get a half a penny on the tax rate, which is exactly what Steve Hyer texted me and, or forwarded out in the email to everybody here. So the bottom line is, would it make other people pay for the taxes if you got rid of this? Well, yeah, that is true, but we have one big player paying for almost all of it. And so is it really worth all the work to do all this? I don't know the answer to that. But each one of these cards are picked off by hand. That was my, that's the...
No, Mr. Fuller, everything is entered in the computer. When we put the grand list together, we enter in all the information regarding each parcel, if any changes have been made through the year, that increases or decreases your assessment, and it's all entered in the computer program. And then the numbers for the tax rate are entered in after the Select Board sets them, and the computer generates all these forms.
I know, but somebody's getting paid by the hour to do that, whether it's Nemrick or you guys or the financial office. Somebody's getting paid by the hour to do that. Right? It gotta be. It's not, it doesn't drop out of the sky. It can't.
I can't comment on that right now.
Yeah, okay. That's okay. I'm just pointing out the fact that it does cost money to get this money. It does. We pay people by the hour to do the financial work. How does the board wanna go this? Because we've taken enough time to do this. I suggest that either Brandon and I, or there's gotta be some coordination with the listers. They've obviously sent out a number of these notices. Lynn just pointed out there's 25 more to go, or something to that effect. I like Brandon's idea. I like Mike's idea about somehow, but I don't know how you, I don't know how you can form a grant that's open-ended. But you're pretty clever. I don't know what we're talking about. So usually, they're kind of finite, and they're asking for a certain cost, and then you get reimbursed. This is a little unknown. Paul?
No, I'm sorry. You can go ahead and answer the question.
No, it's okay. You go ahead.
I just wanted to clarify for everybody that's online, and us and my own self, these, all these forms, they have to be, they have to be filled out and sent back here. And then we can decide too, I think, on where they fall in. But they, all the forms have to be filled out and sent in. Even if you think you, you don't meet that 10,000, you still need to fill it out.
That's my understanding.
Well, yep.
Yes.
Correct. If you have, if a business gets this form, and you have no business personal property, just fill out the top of the form so we know who you are, sign the bottom saying that that's your statement, turn it over, and on the backside of the form, write no business personal property, and mail it back to us, and we take your name off the list. You may, however, in three to five years, get another form sent to you saying, has anything changed in your business? If you don't have any business personal property, send it on back the same way.
Mike?
A question to Lynn.
Well?
Well, it's okay. It's on what she just said.
Okay.
So, no personal property. Should they be indicating that, that no, no personal property means that I'm under the $10,000 exemption? Or, I'm just looking for clarity is what I'm...
If you have any business personal property, you should list it on the back with a depreciated amount according to the IRS. They have a depreciation schedule that you can use with your equipment. So if you have five pieces of equipment, and each one costs $1,000, and you've had it 10 years and it's depreciated 90%, then you add the 10% up, and that's the number you put on the bottom. If you come in under the $10,000, then we will enter you in the system and put you in the inactive list, and in another three to five years, you may get another form also.
Yes.
Could, could, see, the exemption is actually created by the town.
Correct.
So could the town or the Select Board create an exemption letter, which is a simple statement from a, that we, that somebody would fill out that says, I am below, I've added my stuff up, I'm below $10,000, sign on the dotted line and give that to you?
The form we use is provided by the Department of Evaluation, I'm sorry. The form we use is provided by the Department of Evaluation and Review. It's not a form that we made up. It's a state form that's uniform throughout the state of Vermont for all the listers.
Yeah, but I'm not addressing that form. I'm saying, because we have an exempt status, which not everybody does. So if somebody actually adds their stuff up and they fall under the exempt status, can't they just sign a letter that says, I, I'm in exempt status? Please put me down as zero. Could we create that?
I think you marked that on zero on her form. Yeah.
I, the statute reads that the form has to be submitted. That's what we're going by, is what the state statute says.
Okay. So it is law.
I think there's, I think there's a line in that letter that will say that. If you're zero, write zero and sign your name. Now, I gotta tell you, when you sign your name to a document, I don't know, I don't care whether it's generated from the town, you're saying that you're, you know, you're putting your arm up and you're, you know, you've got a Bible and you're telling the truth. So there's some consequences with somebody finding out you're not telling the truth. So it is what it is.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
If you send us back the personal property form saying that you have zero, we cannot go out and inspect your property. We're taking you at your honest word as a resident in the citizen. We don't do inspections.
Is the board happy with just trying to do what I said, which is to try to, to see, I don't know what, I have no idea what the status is of the state. I know that the state kept some money back for COVID reimbursement. That we're in a unique situation with the state of emergency. There may or may not be some funds that would do this. So I think that's probably the direction to go, given the fact that we can't have a special town meeting. Is that okay with the board? I'd like to hear some yes.
Yes.
Okay. Joey?
Yes.
I personally would not like to drop this, and I would like to see it on a ballot this coming year. If we can subsidize it this year, or at least the exemption amount changed, one that will affect the smaller businesses, maybe up to 100,000 or 50,000 or something else.
I don't see a ballot, though, until the next town meeting, because we don't vote again in, we don't vote again this year.
Well, that's only a year out, though.
Yeah. Yeah. But we can, you know, that, we can, the problem is sometimes it gets lost unless we have a reminder. I mean, it's only, we just had town meeting, you know, two days ago. So, yes.
Two, two quick points. One goes back to Lisa Slade. She had asked about the numbers. I did some research today. The exemption was voted on in 2012, March 5th, 2012. At that time, there were approximately 60, I believe.
I don't know.
It was right around 50 or 60 people. Anyway, that was in the minutes of the discussion at that time. That's, that's point one. And point number two, yours truly, that, the, the article that was before the town was for the $10,000 exemption. And I made a motion to amend to get rid of it completely, and that failed on the floor. I just want everybody to know that, in 2012.
Okay. We're gonna move on, I guess. So thank you for your comments. Well, first before I do that, are there any other comments online? Because everybody has spoken here at the table enough. So are there any other comments online about this?
One question?
Okay, go ahead.
Paul Chauncey?
Yep.
If this is a state law that you have to, that you have to do this, this is personal property tax, then the only, and the only option is, what is our level of exemption within the town? Is that correct?
Correct.
No, the, the, the law says that you could, or there's some wording somewhere, but it takes a vote of the town to exempt everybody, or keep it, or somewhere in the middle, which is what Mike said for the first $10,000 exemption. They give you the flexibility of doing it, but it takes a town, a town vote, a warned town vote.
Okay. All right. I understand now. I didn't understand before, but now I understand. Thank you.
Yep. Yep. Okay. Are there any other comments online at all? Any other? Hearing none, we're gonna move on. Thank you so much. We have discussion about the Select Board Representative to Solid Waste. I like the job that Paul is doing, and he's in the middle of it. I suggest that we keep him there.
Make motion.
To approve, to appoint Paul Tillman to Solid Waste.
Yes, sir.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion been made and seconded to appoint Paul Tillman to Solid Waste. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay. Public Affairs, I think that has been done in the past by Joey. I don't know if you wanna continue to do that or not, or I don't know if we wanna do that, or how, what's the board's feeling about that?
Make motion to nominate, or Joey Jarvis continue as the Representative of Public Affairs.
I'll second that.
Motion been made, seconded to appoint Joey Jarvis to the Board Representative to Public Affairs. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
How about Economic Development? Mr. Todd has been doing that.
Make a motion to keep Michael as the Representative to Economic Development.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Motion been made, seconded to keep Mr. Todd at Economic Development. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? We have Highway that's open. John did that before. I don't know that we need to fill that tonight, or what's the board's pleasure?
Joey, would you be willing to do that too? My thought is, other than Mr. Fuller, who's kinda got his hands full with everything else he does, you're the next one with the most knowledge that I know of.
I get calls from, so I'm in the middle of it anyway, but I, but I mean, I get called, and I get called from Raymond today, and so he's asking me questions all the time about it. But I don't need to do it. And if you wanted to do something along that line and get into the middle of that, that's fine with me. I get, I get it from the emergency management situation, that's all.
And I had no clue of anybody having any interest in this. I just thought I'd ask...
I'm wondering what it entails.
Sometimes the Highway Committee, which is usually the town manager and the board rep, and Ray, who's the Highway, will go out, and if they have to look at a road, or sometimes, and sometimes it's got to do with the road width, there might be a little dispute, there might be a job that they're doing, that you might be putting together an RFP for something. I know Ray just got a grant to do some reclamation work, drainage. So sometimes you sit in on a bids, or you might have ideas about the garage, and you have a meeting between the three of you.
Presentation at town meeting?
Yes, yeah.
I'm only laughing a little bit, because I should have asked that question before I accepted the Solid Waste one back then, because everything you just said.
That's the most...
All of a sudden on another committee. When did this happen?
Solid Waste is heaven right now for you.
Oh, my goodness.
It's like...
You wanna talk about jumping in without a life?
Yeah, it hasn't, it hasn't done what it's doing now in 30 years.
No, but I'm learning a lot.
Although I will make this comment. The, I saw the new dump stickers, and they are awesome. And apparently...
Can't copy them. Perfect.
Joey, I wanna throw back out what David said. We don't necessarily have to decide this thing.
No, we don't have to decide.
We wanna take the time to think about it and...
And I will tell you this. Each, each of us up here at this table has a vote. And when the bigger things, items come, each of us get to weigh in on any subject. And my vote is equal to Paul's or Kelly's, or it doesn't matter. So there's no one vote that's any different than any one of the rest of us. So if there's a decision to be made, it is what it is.
I'm sorry. And also, even though you're on that, you still, or anybody, I think, we all help each other to an extent, like, you know, John, John Arson, when he was here, he had some good comments with this Holloway stuff, and he periodically would send something out indicating, you know, something that he saw, or especially now that he's in the house a little bit. So, you know, we're all, we all can kinda help too, so.
Why don't we leave it open for now? Let's go to proposed future agenda items. On March 15th, with our next warned meeting, there's a public hearing at 6:30 on several planning board items to be heard by the board. Is that correct?
Yep.
The planning board has, I don't know how many, a few. And then we'll be talking about Select Board Goals, Town Manager. Are these things gonna be on the agenda, do you think, Brandon? Uh, I, are these things gonna be on the agenda, do you think, Brandon?
Uh, they're just, I'm proposing these items, but the board determines, sets the agenda.
Um, just so the board can keep thinking downhill, I mean, obviously, we're, we're, we were, uh, really hopeful that we would resolve the Town Forest slash Abbott situation. That has come further than at any other time in history. Uh, Brandon has a notebook on it, and we're not gonna go have to reinvent the wheel. He has that material for all of us to review again. And if you have time, Kelly, I'm, I'm sure that either I can help you out with some of that information, or Brandon can. Um, we absolutely need closure on that. It's been a very difficult 10-year situation that we're trying to resolve. That's, to me, that's in the front and center of what we could do. Um, other than that, you know, the fire contracts are something. I don't know what else. Anybody has any ideas what they'd like to bring forward for items that they'd like to take up for this year? Um, think about that for the 15th, or if you can get it to me before then. Did you, did they help you out? You have town email now? Kelly? You, you don't, you don't have, uh?
I have my own.
Okay. Uh, the office can help you out. Either the girls or Brandon can make sure that that happens.
I'm gonna need help too. I tried to log in today and I can't get in it.
You need a lot of help.
Okay.
Well, that's, yeah, that's all, we can't talk about that tonight. We wanna go home.
No time. Anyway, we, we've gotta get people hooked up on the communication, uh, part. So there is a little bit of time here to think about what we want to talk about on the 15th. Um, normally, Brandon and I get together by Wednesday or Thursday of any particular week to try to get that set up for Monday's meeting. Paul?
The other quick thing too, I was just curious, um, when do we go through the, the, uh, conductive meeting and, uh, our ethics signature stuff? Do we need to do that again as board members? I know.
We, we have, uh, has anybody in the office given you any of the Select Board notebook? It's usually a great big binder. Not yet? Okay, we'll get it to you. And then that outlines conductive meetings, policies, lots of different things. We could go over it, I suppose, if we'd like to refresh, but.
I just, I think there's some things she has to sign.
Yep. Well, I don't know about, yeah.
Yeah, there is.
Okay, but I, but, but more importantly, to read.
Oh, yeah, no, 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 but.
Uh, so it's just a matter of review about different things. It's just, I don't know, it's kind of standard. I mean, we wait our turns to speak, we don't shout out. I mean, there's, this, except for Mr. Todd. No, I don't recognize you.
What do you mean? You've known me forever.
I need a club.
I just don't know if that need to be on. Sometimes it's on me a time and then we deal.
No, but I, I, I remember asking somebody if, if Kelly had had, or if we were prepared to have that. So she's got to get that information. Uh, it's a loose leaf notebook, I notice.
I, I do have one consideration that I'm forced to be thinking about. It goes all year long, if I may. Am I recognized?
My glasses are fogging up.
Do you know me?
Go ahead, you're gonna give me some answers.
No, I'm just budget. I don't wanna wait until November to start budget conversations.
Why is Chauncey flagging you down?
No, I'm, that's, yeah, I'm on the Budget Committee.
You are?
You can't wait for no matter.
There's a Budget Committee?
Sorry.
She is the Budget Committee.
I am the Budget Committee.
Do you know her?
No.
Okay. Can we move on?
Yes.
Who's got the keys?
So, so if people have an idea of what they wanna, if they, if they have anything that's pressing on the, uh, agenda for Monday, the 15th, can you, can you at least, uh, and we'll make sure that you get set up with email for sure for the town, because it's gonna be, what is it, weathersfield.org or something?
I think she's already set up, right?
Okay.
I believe, okay.
Is there a password or?
Okay.
That's, that's how you contacted me before. Suzanne contacted me through my Yahoo.
Okay.
We'll give you your email access tomorrow.
Pressing our policy, sorry.
Yeah. So if anybody has anything that's pressing, forward it onto Brandon, and then he'll get it over to me somehow, because the chair sets the agenda. And if I like it, good. If I don't, nah, not so.
Two-thirds vote we all agree.
What's that?
Two-thirds vote we all agree.
It has to happen in an open meeting. It's not two-thirds, it's three votes. I know the rules.
Well, what do you think?
We operate, we operate under Robert's rules.
Two-thirds are five, six, seven?
After three yes votes. And mine counts as four.
Keeping you in check right here.
Um, let's go to, I can see the April 5th meeting as well. Um, I'm not sure, you know, whether all that's gonna happen in sequence. It's, it's Brandon's idea that comes up. Let's move to appointments. Um, I did hear a comment before about appointments. Um, these are the people, correct me if I'm wrong, Brandon, these are the people that are on this list that have submitted letters into the office looking for appointed. The people in black, hyped letters.
Yes.
Okay, good.
Yep.
Okay. So I want a motion to appoint those people. Um, and then we'll, I'm gonna read them off and the, uh, let's take them in a block. How about the first? Let's go down to the constable, okay? So we're gonna do Animal Control Officer, Budget Committee, Conservation Committee, and Constable. Okay, I'd like a motion to appoint Kathy Sullivan, let's just take these up one by one. I'd like a motion to take, uh, to appoint Kathy Sullivan, the Animal Control Officer.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Yes.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Good. The Budget Committee, uh, Chauncey Tillman, like a motion.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Most of the main second to appoint, appoint Chauncey as the Budget Committee. All those in favor?
Aye.
What's FT members stand for?
Full-time.
Full-time.
Really?
Um, we, she should be overtime. All the time. How about, how about, how about ATT, all the time? Um, we have opening for Connecticut River Joint Commission Representative that's open right now. Um, we have two people that are interested in the Conservation Committee, Heather Shand and Roy Burton, need a motion.
I'll make a motion for that.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded to appoint Heather Shand and Roy Burton to the Conserv- Conservation Committee. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Uh, motion for the constable, the town constable, to be William Daniels, the Police Chief.
So moved.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded to approve William Daniels as the constable. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the Energy Coordinator is open. Uh, anybody interested in doing these things, submit a letter into the town, the town office or town manager, we will have it on the agenda for review. Fence Viewer, Greenup Coordinator, getting stuffy here. Um, Martin Hall, Board of Trustees. Um, we have three people that are interested in the Parks and Rec Commission, Olivia Savage, Chris Wooden, and Mark Richardson. Like, like a motion. Second?
Second.
Uh, most of the main seconded to approve Olivia Savage, Chris Wooden, and Mark Richardson to the Parks and Rec Commission. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Uh, Planning Commission, Michael Todd and Tyler Harwell.
So moved.
Is there a second? I'm gonna second that. Uh, Mr. Todd and Mr. Tillman are members of that commission. That's, I wanna note that for the minutes up, uh, he's, Mr. Todd is already existing, looking to be reappointed. Are these for, uh, most of the main seconded to approve Michael Todd and Tyler Harwell to the Planning Commission? Is there any discussion? And my question is, Brandon, is, are these multi-year appointments?
Yes.
Okay, so what are they for, like five years or something?
Mine's four.
What is four?
Mine is four, yeah.
Four? And what is, uh, so each of, each of them a four or no?
Four and three, I think. I think we got this guy.
Is there any discussion on the motion on the table? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Uh, we have a vacancy for, now, we have Brandon Galnick to be the Southern Windsor County Transportation Advisory Committee Rep.
Ooh, well, that's a mouthful.
Yep.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion been made and seconded to appoint our town manager, Brandon Galnick, to be the Southern Windsor County Transportation Advisory Committee Representative.
That, that's not long enough. We need more words.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Need a motion to appoint Paul Tillman to the Solid Waste District.
So moved.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded to approve Paul Tillman as the, as the, uh, Solid Waste Management District Member. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Me.
Okay, four to one. Uh, Surveyor of Wood, Roderick Bates, like a motion to do that, please.
So moved. Second.
Uh, most of the main seconded to approve Roderick Bates as the Surveyor of Wood. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Uh, we have a vacancy for a Tree Warden. Uh, that's kind of important, and normally it's, uh, the head of the highway or some highway, because we do have from time to time issues with, particularly with ro, uh, trees on the roads. But, but that's open, and anybody interested can, can do that. Uh, Weir of Coal, John Arison.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded to approve John Arison as the Weir of Coal. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Zoning Board of Adjustment, Jim Cahill, Dave Gobranson, and David Todd Hiddinger as the full-time members with DeForest Beers and Willis Wood as alternates. Like a motion for that, the whole board.
I'll make a motion for that. And I'd also just like to thank Willis. Yeah, I think he's stepping down from full-time to, uh.
Is there a second?
Second.
Most of the main seconded to appoint the, the, uh, the slate as noted with alternates and full-time members. Is there any discussion? I would also add, uh, I've talked with Willis and he, he spoke with me about this, uh, and he said he's getting on and he's served enough, but he'd still be interested. And I urged him to, to still be an alternate because of his knowledge and help, and he agreed, so. Uh, most of the main seconded to approve this slate as noted. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you on that. Uh, what else do we have here? Warrants. I, it, okay, let me back up a step. So if there are any vacant, uh, you can see the vacancies. Brandon, is, is the complete list of our appointments on here? Is that, this is the total of them all?
Yep, that's all of them.
Okay. So we'll keep the, how about we keep the empty ones, or the unfilled ones, up on the town's website, and we keep, we keep that in front of people, so that they know that it's available to fulfill if you'd like to.
And maybe just the amount of members, like, I'm not sure what, for a Budget Committee, how many people are supposed to be on that? So if it's three open seats or two open seats, maybe we can put that beside.
And I, and I did have that question, I think it was from DeForest, about the Veterans Committee, and there was another committee, can't remember, but I responded to her by saying that I didn't think that there was a finite number of committee members, so it was the more, the merrier, so to speak.
And maybe some are, are open like that.
So I, I don't think there's a cap, for instance, on the Recreation Committee either. I don't, I don't recall.
Maybe we should find that out. So on the Planning Commission, we still have a seat open.
That's good to know, because, yeah, okay, so we need to do that. So, well, wait a minute now, have we, we haven't, at this table, we haven't officially accepted resignation. So we need to have that before the board on the 15th of March.
You're absolutely right. Thank you. I, I, I forgot, we didn't already have it.
It doesn't matter at your table, it matters at this table.
Oh, I know.
Okay.
This is the big one.
Matters at our table.
It doesn't.
No, we got the kids there.
Let's move to warrants. Uh, somebody knew we was gonna have to take up warrants, because John used to do it like all the time, and now we have to have, I, do we have warrants for tonight, Brandon?
Yeah.
Yeah. They're not in front of me.
I got it.
Okay.
Make a motion to accept the warrants of March 4th, 2021. Uh, General Fund payroll, $21,978.19. Operating expenses, $32,245.44. Highway Fund payroll, $17,145.52. Operating expense, $23,868.75. Solid Waste Management Fund payroll, $2,297. Operating expense, $6,172.50. Library payroll, $2,906.55. Uh, operating expense, zero. Um, uh, MES Fire Equipment Reserves, op, under operating expense, $2,475.50. Grand totals payroll, $44,327.26. Operating expense, $64,762.19.
Okay, the motion's been made and seconded to approve the warrants for the Town of Weathersfield, March 4th, 2021, for the noted amounts of payroll and operating expenses. Are there any, is there any discussion on the warrants? Now, just, just to help you out, Kelly, I mean, we, did you get this packet before the meeting? Okay, good. So you can scroll down here, and what we do is, if, if at any time you see that you have a question on whatever it is, uh.
So this, this warrant that I'm looking at, that he, Mr. Todd just read, does that go with all this stuff below it? So, this, this warrant that I'm looking at, that he ju- Mr. Todd just read, does that go with all this stuff below it?
Yes.
Okay.
So, if you look at, like, sheet number one, and you look up the top, it says one of five. The thing to look for is what's in parentheses, which is the general fund. That, that will have to do with either the town office, the police, the fire departments, or what else, Brandon?
Library, listers.
Yep. So, all, any of these, any of these expenses do this. So, if you scroll down, if you scroll down to page, uh, let me go to, now, you keep gotta go to five. So, so, five of five, all that is complete to the general fund.
Yep.
Then you'd go up on the next page of one of three, you'd go to the Highway Fund. So, that's anything to do down at the Highway Garage. And, I don't know, you'll probably see diesel fuel and salt and NAPA and things like that. Then you keep scrolling, and you go to Solid Waste. Same thing, anything to do over at the transfer station. So, if you have any question at any time, um, you just say, hey, I have a question on, and it doesn't go by line item, so sometimes it's, it's better to refer to the check number, because they're in, they're easier to kind of figure out, or a date or some such a thing like that.
Dave, I do see one that I have a question on.
Okay.
Uh, and just to bring it to attention that we are doing it now, it's, uh, two, two, three, five, four, two.
Under, uh, well, let me go to the page of what you're on, to the general fund or the highway or solid waste?
It says one of three, finance. Um, accounts payable.
Up, up at the top, when you see either general fund, highway, or?
In, in the middle line. There's three lines. In the middle line at the end of it.
Now, what, what, what page are you on, Joey? Up at the top, right there. Nope, right there. What's it say?
Town of Weathersfield Accounts payable.
Next line, all the way at the end.
Yep.
Highway fund.
Highway fund, page what? Page one of three?
Page one of three.
Okay.
Okay.
Now you go to check number.
Yep, two, two, three, five, four, two.
Five, four.
It says Evans Motor Fuel.
Two, okay, good.
And it is, um, seventy-one hundred and fifty dollars worth of diesel fuel.
Yes.
Or so now.
Yes.
Just, that's a big one, so everyone should be.
Yes.
Privy to that.
Um, I, 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 and I would alert you, and we don't know, it doesn't give you the invoice on there about what it is. But, but I, I don't know what fuel is rising to, and we really need to pay attention to that. And we'll probably get a report on that. Um, our budget for this year actually lowered by five thousand dollars for diesel fuel. That's not going anywhere. Diesel fuel has climbed by sixty or seventy cents a gallon. Uh, I, I remember, I remember seeing an invoice over the summer where we were getting invoice on-road at one dollar and forty cents a gallon.
Yep, and that's what.
The town.
That's gone.
That's gone.
It was going down, so it projected lower, and then.
I know. That's not gonna happen. So, and it's not happening now. And so, the town gets a trailer price, and it gets very lucrative. It gets the state price, and that's all fine. But I would have no doubt that it's well over two dollars now for the town, because you take the trailer.
And, and, if I, if I may, really quick, um, there, there are some issues with, like, like you, I had thought myself, well, okay, let's buy a whole bunch of fuel right now, but you can't.
You can't. I've already asked.
You can't do it.
You can't even, uh, contract in and front the money. That's what I asked.
Yeah.
I said, can we make a deal and, and prepay and lock in? And, uh, that's one thing they won't do. But that doesn't mean that other things we can't do. There are other things that we can do. We can lock in on some thing if we know what it is, and we know we're gonna use it. We don't want to do that with something that might be in storage for ten years. I can tell you that right now. That, that, that's not gonna work. There's a motion on the, on the floor to approve the warrants dated March fourth, two thousand and twenty-one. Is there any further discussion on the warrants?
Was there a second? There was one, sorry.
Yes.
Okay, sorry.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay. Is there any other business to come before this meeting that is not on the agenda that I might take up maybe? Hearing none. Uh, I'd like to adjourn, and I want, oh, just a second. I. Do we, do we lower that down or not?
I just don't, I just muted that.
You didn't do it. Um, I got, uh, I got a little notice today, uh, of, uh, and so maybe you and I can take it up. There's a complaint, uh, that either the board's gonna have to deal with, or you. Would you like to take some time to go over that before you share it with the board at the next meeting or two, or? You know what I'm talking about or not? Or, uh, we'll defer that to the next meeting.
Can you give me a hint?
There, there was a complaint that was issued.
Oh, yes. Um.
You want to wait for another meeting? I don't know whether we're gonna hear it or not. I was gonna suggest that if we were, that I would suggest a, a couple of minute executive session, but I don't have to. Uh, I, uh, but I did see that today.
Yeah, maybe, maybe if you could pull us into executive session real quick.
Make a motion to go into executive session?
Second.
Okay, it's, it's for.
Personnel, three thirteen, one, I forget the.
It's for a complaint with personnel. Uh.
Sorry, thank you.
Okay, most of them made and seconded to go into a couple of minutes for executive session, for personnel, for a complaint. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Thank you. Okay.